The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel. I'll to order the August 20th meeting of the Cary Town Council. I want to thank you for joining us tonight from your home as we continue to follow the governor's state of emergency orders. We're streaming tonight's meeting virtually. The majority of council is present here tonight. We've all had our temperatures checked before entering the chamber and, as you can see, we all have adjusted our seating so that we're socially distant. And each person has been given hand sanitizer and a mask to use as they deem appropriate. To meet the requirements of a remote meeting, the remote meeting law, we have one council member participating remotely through WebEx, and that is Councilmember Bush. Councilmember Bush, thank you for joining us remotely.
Hello.
Hello. We can hear you loud and clear. So at this time, I'll call on Councilmember Lou, who will lead our ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I would like to take time to recognize the centennial of the 19th Amendment and the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters. As you may know, the 19th Amendment guarantees and protects women's constitutional right to vote. The League was officially founded in Chicago in 1920, just six months before the 19th Amendment was ratified and the women won the vote. The League began as an association to help 20 million women carry out their new responsibilities as voters. The mission still remains the same for the League, to help voters through their commitment to non-partisanship. As November approaches us, I encourage all citizens to vote, regardless of your party affiliation, out of respect for those who came before us and did not have the right to vote. In honor of these anniversaries, the mayor has issued a proclamation. I hope you all join in to see Councilmember Laurie Bush's short video about this anniversary on our social media sites. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lou. And at this time, I'd ask that everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. There have been two requests to change the agenda. The first request, the applicant of 19REZ-16, Silverton PDD Amendment Parcel G, O-N-I portion, has asked that this item be pulled from tonight's agenda to allow more time to address concerns. Staff has requested PRC, our Master Plan Addendum and Amendment to Imagine Cary Community Plan, be removed from tonight's agenda, and this hearing may return at a future meeting. We had no call-in requests nor submitted comments. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second with a roll call vote. I'll start with Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim France.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurha.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Lou.
Aye.
And I vote affirmative as well. The motion passes. This takes us to Recognitions, Reports, and Presentations. And our only report tonight is the manager's update, and I'll call on Mr. Stiegel at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see everyone again after last week's quarterly meeting. For my update tonight, I wanted to take a moment to share some good news as a reminder of why we choose to serve in local government. As you know, part of our community response to the pandemic is for members of our police department and Project Phoenix to help distribute face masks. So far this month, they've given away 3,000 masks in five apartment communities, as well as one of our mobile home parks. From our standpoint, these have been very positive experiences, and I wanted to read an email that Chief Desmond's received following a visit on Monday. Dear Cary Police Department, I'm a resident at Chatham Forest Apartments located on West Chatham Street. I just wanted to say thank you for the free face masks that you were giving out. I've been a resident of Cary since January of 2020, moved here voluntarily from New Jersey in search of a more calm and peaceful place to live. I'm a software engineer and my company has an office in RTP as well, so the transition was smooth. I must say that this is by far the best location I have ever lived. Seeing a police officer at my door handing me a pack of free face masks really made me feel grateful. Please feel free to forward my gratitude to whomever else you feel is responsible for such a thoughtful act. Again, thank you so much and stay well. I'm gonna, the name, Marat Zazi. Cary citizens are so great. I'll close by reminding everyone that free masks are available at all of our fire stations or by contacting 311. We also carry them in most of our town vehicles. Also a special thanks to Councilmember Lou for helping us source these masks. That concludes my update. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stiegel. We now move to our third item, and it's Public Speaks Out. Instructions for submitting comments for our Public Speaks Out were attached to the posted agenda. Participants had the opportunity to send comments through email, the 311 online portal, and the regular mail. All comments received before noon today were emailed to council, and a printed copy was given to council at tonight's meeting. At this time, I'll open Public Speaks Out and call on staff to summarize any comments received.
We received three comments. Two were from Mary Collins. She wrote in with concerns about 19REZ-16 Silverton PDD and also concerns with 19REZ-18 Young Property. Our third comment came from Alicia Kane about the Borgan Project.
Okay, very good. Do we have any live, do we have any callers on the line this evening?
Yes, we have one caller, Annette Smith. Ms. Smith, would you confirm that you're the right caller by giving your name and address?
Thank you. So my name is Annette Smith. My address is 1104 Imperial Road in Hillsdale Forest.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council. As I mentioned, we live on Imperial Road, and my family and I have lived here for 30 years. I am now in my late 60s and am a widow, and my request is in regards to what's known as ADUs. You guys are probably familiar with them, accessory dwelling units or granny flats. I have a 32-year-old special needs son, Benjamin, or Ben Smith. Many of you know him, as he's very active in Cary and he says all the time he wants to stay in his home for the rest of his life. Ben has one brother who presently lives in Sweden. Parents in their 50s and 60s, you know, with adults like Benjamin, they want to secure their future as best as possible for their kids. Many of us have moved to Cary with no other family members nearby. Many will want, need to rely on permanent loving caregivers who can fill the parents' shoes when we're gone. If you've ever looked for senior housing for your own aging parents, you might understand. It is not easy to prepare for future years, much less decades in our case. The ADUs is one solution to having a caregiver or independent family member close by to allow our children to maintain a safe, loving home environment as independent as they can. This has been approved in many communities, including, you may know, in Raleigh recently, last month it was approved. As we look to both our futures, it's now apparent that I need to establish a close living area for my son's caregivers when I'm no longer able to help him or no longer here. I started looking at homes and I found out readily that prices have skyrocketed and closings happen within 24 hours of listing. Trying to find an ADA accessible home in Cary is next to impossible. It would need to be a place his wheelchair could get into and visit sometimes. So I am requesting an amendment to the Land Development Ordinance to expand where ADUs are allowed, but especially in my R12 zone where we live. I'm asking you to approve this request, or at least allow me an exception. To accomplish this go for us will take many years for me to finish, and so the time for me to start is now. I need your help, and I hope you'll either pass approval for ADUs in Cary, or at least provide me an exception to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay, I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to the Consent Agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting, we're going to take a moment to review the Consent Agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the Consent Agenda, we have minutes. Adjustment to adopted meeting schedule. Bid award for the Crossroads Emergency Interconnection Project. 20A06 Evangelist and Pendograph Annexation. 20A01 7117 Carpenter Fire Station Road Annexation. Cary Holly Springs Interlocal Agreement for Water Interconnections. 19REZ-18 Young Property. 19A10 Young Emerson and Hill Annexation. Street renaming of Heater Alley to Heater Cottage Alley. Downtown Business Improvement District Mitigation Fee Ordinance. Ratification of adoption of street closing order for portions of Old White Oak Church Road. Would councilmembers like any of these consent items pulled for discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve? The consent agenda is red.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim France.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurha.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Lou.
Aye.
And I vote affirmative as well. Motion passes unanimously. And that takes us to our public hearings. Our first public, our first public hearing was removed from the agenda during the adoption of the agenda, and so we're going to remove, we're going to move to the second public hearing, which is 20A05 Retchi Annexation. And Assistant Planning Director Deborah Granon will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this annexation tonight, and the item will return to council at a future meeting for action. This is Granon.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. For your consideration this evening is a request for annexation of 0.65 acres located at 620 Blanche Drive at the northwest corner of Azalea Drive and Blanche Drive. The property is contiguous to the corporate limits of Cary. It's located within Cary's ETJ and is zoned R12, Residential 12. The request is not associated with a development plan or a rezoning, and the property is currently served by well and septic, but the property owner is in the process of making improvements to the site and wishes to connect to Cary water and sewer services. In accordance with the regulations, the property must be annexed before it can connect to Cary utilities. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for 20A05 Retchi Annexation. Since there were no submitted comments nor call-in speakers, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. No questions or comments, so as stated earlier, this annexation will return to us at a future meeting for action. We now move to our next public hearing, 19REZ-31 Cornerstone Mixed Use Plan Amendment rezoning. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Granon will introduce the item, and council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, and it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and turned to council at a future meeting for action. Ms. Granon.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for an amendment to the zoning of approximately 1.8 acres located at 1744 High House Road. The request would rezone the property to mixed-use district with an associated preliminary development plan, and this would allow a proposed bank to also have a drive-up ATM. The property is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Magnus Drive and High House Road. It's an outparcel of the Bradford Development and is currently undeveloped, and it's adjacent to the Muirfield Residential subdivision that is located north and east of the subject property. The base zoning is Residential 40, and the property is located within a mixed-use overlay district. The zoning on the property is also governed by a mixed-use sketch plan that was approved in 2007. One of the conditions associated with this plan limited the maximum number of drive-throughs to three, and there are three existing drive-throughs in the main portion of the Bradford Development. Currently, the subject property would allow up to 6,000 square feet of commercial or office use, so a bank would be a permitted use. However, it would not be allowed to have the additional drive-through without a rezoning. Because the applicant wishes to construct a bank with a drive-through ATM on the subject property, it's necessary for them to rezone to mixed-use district. And with the mixed-use district, they've submitted a preliminary development plan with the following conditions and standards: that the building be limited to two stories in height, that it be limited to a bank use with 3,500 square feet, they've asked for an increase to the parking 30% above the LDO standards, a variable width streetscape along Magnus Drive, and the front of the building would be oriented toward the parking area and would not face a major street or intersection. Cary's most recent GIS maps do not indicate any stream buffers or flood zones on the subject property, and of course, field determination of these features will be required at the time of development plan review. An existing street-side trail is located adjacent to Magnus Drive across the front of the property. The property fronts Magnus Drive, which is a collector road, and High House Road, which is a four-lane median divided thoroughfare. A GoCary fixed transit route operates along High House Road. The Imagine Cary Future Growth Framework map identifies the site as commercial mixed use, where predominant uses include mixed use, commercial with both shopping and services, and multifamily. In staff's initial preliminary analysis of the case against the policies, the Imagine Cary Community Plan, we found that the work and shape chapters are most applicable. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the public hearing, and this exceeds both State and Land Development Ordinance distance requirements. And notice of the public hearing was posted on the property and on Cary's website. We had a neighborhood meeting at Town Hall on February 5th of this year, and there was only one nearby property owner in attendance who had general questions about the request but did not express any specific concerns, and to date, staff has not received any calls or emails. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's representative, Mr. Neil Gauch with Morningstar Law Firm, is on the line to present his comments on the request. And then, following his remarks and the public hearing, he and I will both be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. Mr. Gauch, please proceed.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Weinberg, and members of the Town Council. My name is Neil Gauch. I'm an attorney with the Morningstar Law Group, located at 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Tonight, I am representing the applicant for the proposed rezoning. I want to thank Deborah for her presentation of the case. I think the concept is fairly straightforward. We are attempting to rezone the property essentially to allow for a drive-through facility at the bank. The current zoning allows for the bank without the drive-through. In fact, the current zoning would allow for a bank almost twice the size of the one we're proposing, so in a sense, this could be viewed as a downzoning, but the reality is that the drive-through is vital to the business, especially now with the COVID crisis. Banks have seen a sharp increase in drive-through utilization. In fact, The Wall Street Journal dubbed this phenomenon "The Bank Drive-Thru COVID Comeback." Now, in this case, drive-through is to accommodate a kiosk and not a teller. This will allow banking access even after regular hours, which provides an additional convenience for customers. The kiosk will be shielded from the ride-away, so people will not really see it unless they're looking for it. This PDP, as Deborah mentioned, does include a slight parking increase over the LDO standard of one space per 200 square feet. That would equate to seven spaces, and the PDP should be reduced. Additionally, instead of a 15-foot-wide streetscape along Magnus, the PDP goes as a variable width streetscape that will provide more streetscape area than otherwise is required. And due to the existing retaining walls, the PDP also modifies the LDO standard for building entrance placement. Ultimately, this is a modest rezoning to allow for a drive-up kiosk for an otherwise permitted financial institution. Visually, it will have minimal impact. From a traffic standpoint, this project actually will result in footprints than the current zoning allows, and there's really not a whole lot more to it. I thank you for tonight and hope to have your support on the rezoning. I look forward to receiving your comments, and I'm available to answer questions. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Gauch. Now's the time for the public hearing, 19REZ-31 Cornerstone Mixed Use Plan Amendment rezoning. And since there were no submitted comments nor call-in speakers, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll...
Just, yeah, I gotta say it. I mean, I have no concerns with the use, the drive-through, any of that kind of stuff. I just, I don't know, understand why we're still turning the back of buildings facing the street. I just, I struggle with that, you know? I get parking lot and you get your car and it looks like the front of the building, or it is the front of the building, but coming down High House and Magnus, you're going to see the side and the back of a building. The front's the pretty part. I just...
I think that's a good point.
To me, but the building where the parking lot is, but the parking lot where the building is, I think you fix it, but...
Well, I think, you know, I do think that we were trying to kind of put the parking tucked off of rows, but there should be a way to design this so that you can still have the street sides not looking like the back sides of a building. So I agree with you. I think that's a fair point.
Any other comments?
Well, I have a comment.
Okay.
So I do like the drive-up that's, that's not facing High House. I do like that. I do think that that's a better place for it, but I absolutely agree with Councilmember France that there were other options here that I would like to see the front of the buildings on either Magnus or on High House.
Okay, very good. Other comments? Okay, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we'll return to this council for consideration and final action at a future date. Speakers?
No speakers.
Okay. Our next public hearing is a requested amendment to the Fenton Development Agreement, and Deputy Manager Russ Overdham will introduce the item, and action will be taken at the applicant's request after the rezoning presentation, which is our first discussion item. Mr. Overdham?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In early 2018, after more than a year of discussions, reviews, and negotiations, council approved the initial Fenton Preliminary Development Plan, and later that same year, council approved the Fenton Development Agreement. Since that time, the Master Developer Partnership of Columbia, Heinz, USAA have all been working hard to bring Fenton vision to reality. In early 2019, they purchased the 92-acre parcel from the state. They've spent many months in preliminary review with town staff, and earlier this year, they started construction, including grading, construction of retaining walls, utilities, stormwater devices, and other site infrastructure. The project is now well underway, and the developer has submitted site development plans for the first two phases, including 14 plans for building construction permits. And now, a search for building financing has led the master developer to determine that several changes to the development agreement would be beneficial to the success of the project, and thus have requested the amendments to the development agreement before you tonight. In general, the proposed amendments seek to provide more rights to investors and lenders in the Fenton project to protect their investment. Before I go over what is changing, I want to first give a high-level overview of what was approved in the original development agreement in 2018. It provides the needed public infrastructure within the Eastern Cary Gateway Special Planning Area, including Trinity Road, Quinard, and Sloan Drive Extension, Cary Town Boulevard widening, the onsite improvements to Iron Gate Greenway, utility infrastructure. And it should be noted, funding for this needed public infrastructure was voter-approved as part of the 2019 Shaping Cary's Tomorrow Bonds. It also requires Energy Star office buildings and equipment and appliances in residential units above what can be required by state law or building code. They're also providing LED lighting and electrical vehicle charging stations and parking spaces. A $22.5 million maximum reimbursement from Cary can, can only, is only after public infrastructure is constructed and buildings in Phases A and B are under construction. The key component of these amendments that I, that we are holding firm on are key provisions of the original development agreement. The proposed amendments before you tonight do not change the overall reimbursement amounts or structure or term of the original agreement. Now let me review the three areas of the proposed amendments that would change. The details are also contained in your staff report. And oh, I must mention that we wouldn't have been here tonight without the many months, six to be exact, of hard work and very detailed negotiations by our wonderful town attorneys, Chris Simpson and Lisa Glover. These development agreements are certainly not for the faint of heart. I also should mention that Rob Wilson was an integral part of these negotiations, and he is managing every detail, including all 100 conditions of the active construction project. So first are the changes to financial partners and ancillary developers. The master developer is proposing several changes related to lenders and investors in the project and to ancillary developers. In general, these changes would simplify the process for approving ancillary developers, which are the developers other than the master developer, who may develop a hotel or office building. The changes would also provide additional protections for lenders and investors to protect their investments if the master developer or an ancillary developer defaults on its obligations to the town or its lenders. In a worst-case scenario, Fenton could be controlled by these lenders rather than the master developer. However, even in this scenario, Fenton must still be developed in compliance with the zoning PDP and the design guidebook. Second are changes to the timing of construction and reimbursements. Due to the complexities in the intersection design and in the coordinated review with NC DOT of the Quinard Road and Sloan Drive Maynard intersection, the master developer has requested the adjustment of the timing of that construction. The master developer has also developed a Greenway Plan that in order to meet, to be more environmentally prudent, should be constructed in two phases. And finally, in this category, the master developer anticipates that the construction of Building 8, expected to be a hotel, will be delayed, and that the location of Building 3A will be needed for the Wegmans' construction staging. As noted in the rezoning case also before you tonight, the master developer is exploring options to build an expanded parking deck, D3, in lieu of Building 9. Total reimbursements would be reduced by 5% until Buildings 3A, 8, and 9, or an enhanced parking deck are constructed. Third, the master developer requests to clarify the list of fees estimated during the time of rezoning to now better align with actual construction. And just to be clear, the total cap on fees paid by Cary, which is $5.5 million, would not change with this amendment. So in closing, I just want to again reiterate that the approval of this amended development agreement will have no direct fiscal impact beyond that which was agreed to when the development... development agreement was originally approved in 2018, nor will it affect the overall term of the development agreement. However, the amendments requested by the master developer could, in a worst-case scenario, lead to a project ultimately controlled by lenders, financiers, and other developers rather than the master developer known to carry today. That said, it's important to note that none of the proposed amendments relieve the developer or any developer of its responsibility to ensure compliance with the development agreement and the Fenton zoning and PDP. This concludes staff's presentation. And Mr. Abbott Goodwin with Columbia Development is here on behalf of the applicant to offer his comments, and following his comments in the public hearing, I have one additional comment, and will also be available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. At this time, I'd ask Mr. Goodwin to proceed.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Council. I hope everybody's doing well. Appreciate the, the audience tonight. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, you know, I, I really want to compliment staff on their many months of effort associated with the Fenton project. As you know, we, we started down this path in late 2015, and I am absolutely overwhelmed and excited about where we are with this project. We had set it up so that we could do it in several different phases to begin with, and this first phase of development, I'm happy to report, will consist of over a million square feet of mixed-use, mixed-use product and have a total construction cost of over $300 million. So, as you might imagine, with 14 different buildings and a million square feet, it, it's complicated, and, you know, it's required lots of attention and lots of input from really smart people and a number of different partners in terms of equity and debt. And these changes that we've requested are, I think, aligning with, you know, everything that we had anticipated and wanted in conceiving of this project, and I, I frankly think it'll be better than we thought it could be. And a lot of credit due to staff and their stewardship of council's desire to make this a very special place. So, you know, with that, if you all have any questions at all, I'm happy to answer them, and again, just to appreciate your continued time and support and patience.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. So now's the time for the public hearing for requested amendments to Fenton Development Agreement. And since we had no submitted comments nor call-in speakers, I'll once again close the public hearing. And I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments. Questions or comments from council? Seeing, hearing none, we, my understanding is we will defer action on this item until after our discussion item, which is coming up next.
Yes.
All right. So now we move to discussion, and our discussion item pertains to Fenton being 20REZO-01 Fenton Mixed Use Development Amendment, and the item for which we just held a public hearing, Amendment to Fenton Development Agreement. And once again, Assistant Planning Director Deborah Granon will first give a report and summarize the recommendation for our planning board on behalf of the chair regarding this rezoning amendment. And council may take action tonight on this item, and if it acts, if it acts to adopt the zoning amendment, may act on the requested amendments to Fenton Development Agreement. That was a mouthful. Ms. Granon?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as you know, the Fenton Development Plan Amendment was found by the Planning and Zoning Board to be consistent with the Imagine Cary Community Plan by a unanimous vote. And staff also found that the nature of the changes did not alter our previous finding of consistency with the plan. So traditionally, when this occurs, you would see this on the consent agenda rather than as a discussion item. But this is such an important project, and it's a complicated project, so we just wanted to briefly review the amendment with you one more time before you took final action. So what has not changed is that the project continues to offer exceptional design commitments with vertically-integrated mixed uses, architectural elements that exceed Cary's LDO standards, assurances in the form of a design guidebook that detail commitments to architecture, hardscape, landscape features, as well as signage and artwork opportunities. As Mr. Overton mentioned, the project is underway. The developer has engaged consultants and engineers and is in negotiations with tenants related to leasing spaces, and so now is the time when building infrastructure and design and market demand start to solidify. And when that occurs, it's common for development of this magnitude to seek an adjustment as you go from the concept to the construction drawings. So what has changed is shifting of the land uses within different pods on the site, strengthening the requirement for vertical integration in some of the buildings, increasing the building height in the core of the project, and providing clarification to certain terms and design concepts. As a reminder, there is no increase to the number of dwelling units or no increase in the square footage to commercial or office use. So the item with the change that generated the most interest, both with adjacent property owners and which triggered some questions at the public hearing and in front of the Planning and Zoning Board, was the building height. So this helps you see that the developer is proposing to increase both the minimum and maximum number of stories for four of the building pods, and this would increase the heights of the pods which anchor the main street to a minimum of four to five stories and a maximum of 12 stories. When it comes to the land uses, as I mentioned, there's some shifting within the pods and then adding a new commercial jewel box as part of Phase 2. The original preliminary development plan only allowed banks with drive-throughs if they were located in a parking structure, and now the applicant is seeking to allow one ATM adjacent to Parking Deck D1 with the condition that buildings in Pod 4 be located so that they screen the view of the ATM from Carytown Boulevard. And as Mr. Overton alluded to, the applicant's also requesting the option to remove Building 9 and to expand the D3 Parking Deck footprint. And if this option is selected, the applicant has committed to ensuring that the southern elevation of the building deck be designed in such a manner that it appears to actually be a residential office or a commercial building. So as I mentioned, staff reviewed the request against the policies, the Imagine Cary Community Plan, and since most of this plan was unchanged, we found that the proposed changes did not alter the intent or the impact of the previous approval, and therefore, staff's finding is still poor consistency with the plan. At their virtual meeting on July 27th, the Planning and Zoning Board found the request to be consistent by a vote of eight to zero, and Board Chair Ryan Eads provided the following comments, which I will read into the record. The board felt that the additional flexibility requested by the applicant would result in improvements to the overall development. The height increase was justified, given the urban feel that is central to the Fenton development, and the applicant did a good job of keeping consistent, consistent with standards outlined in the design guidebook that was presented as part of the Fenton rezoning. This concludes staff's presentation. As a reminder, there are two separate actions for you to take, first on the rezoning request and then on the development agreement. Mr. Goodwin with Columbia Development, Russ Overton and I are all available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. At this time, I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments. Staff did a good job of summarizing this.
An incredibly good job of summarizing.
Yeah.
I would echo the praise and thanks to all of our staff who worked diligently on this for months. It's complicated, and without their work and being able to explain it to me in a way that I can actually understand, I don't know that I ever would understood it. But I do, so I thank you for that, and I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Can we ask that you use the motion?
Yep, there are motions at your seat. And there are two motions, right?
Correct.
A move that we approve. The statement of consistency is attached to this motion document for 20REZO-01 Fenton Mixed Use Development and rezoning 20REZO-01 Fenton Mixed Use Development.
There's a motion, is there a second? And the second. Discussion. All right, roll call vote. Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Mayor Protim France?
Aye.
Councilmember Yurha?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Lou?
Aye.
And I vote affirmative as well. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. France, you'll try another one.
Yeah. A move that we adopt the resolution, making certain findings and adopting the ordinance approving modifications to the development agreement for the Fenton Mixed Use Development. Do I have to read the whole rest of the stuff, too? It's like half a page.
No, it's just the bottom part, right here.
So that's, that's it?
Yeah, I think what you said is sufficient.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There were two seconds.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I will take it.
Discussion. Roll call vote, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Mayor Protim France?
Aye.
Mr. Yurha?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Lou?
Aye.
And I vote affirmative as well. The motion passes unanimously.
Wow.
Lee, that concludes the regular agenda. I would entertain a motion at this time to go into closed session. Ms. Bush?
Sure. Pursuant to GS 143-318, 11A and 3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143-318-10E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Roll call vote, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Mayor Protim France?
Aye.
Councilmember Yurha?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Lou?
Aye.
I vote affirmative as well, and we're now going into closed session in Room 1035?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks for holding me back this week.
Thanks for holding my back this week.